I'd like to call to order the Policy Committee meeting today, Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. It is 6:34. We are in the National High School North Boardroom. I'd like to -- roll call? Do you want to do it? You have -- I have. Sorry. Okay. So, I'm here. Jen, Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Ms. Seem? She's not here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Here.
And I see Ms. Brown is here.
Here.
And Ms. Oden. Okay. Oops. Sorry.
Ray, do you want to help her?
Can you?
Yep.
Sorry.
She'll get to be an old hattie after a while.
Good.
Call the meeting to order at what time?
6:34.
6:34.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. So, I'd like to -- I'd like to bring forward a proposed Policy EF Food Service Management. This is a policy that the Food Service Director sent to the state for feedback. It has all the requirements to comply with regulations. Do we want to discuss this? Ms. Fitzpatrick, can you speak to the policy?
The Food Service Director is here and she can come up and answer any questions you may have. Dahlia Dagel?
Hi. Hello. Hello. Thank you for coming. Do you want to speak to the changes that were made in the policy?
Okay. I realized I was on. Sorry. So, we -- so, I sent it to Kathy from the DOE and then she did the edits for me. She added "at the end" and "by the USDA." And then I made the corrections that it's the Food Service Director, not the manager. And we report directly to the superintendent and then -- or a designee, not the building principals, like some other food service. And then we just -- she had me update the last few sentences here and then added those few. So, it was just based on her recommendations.
Do we have any questions for her? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Why are we changing from manager to director now? Is that we don't have a manager's position anymore?
No, we do not. So, I do -- I oversee all the order of the supplies and the records. This was retyped. So, this was a brand-new policy. So, when we wrote it, we had -- we grabbed the policy from another district. And when I looked at it, I'm like, oh, let me just make sure that it's correct, that it says director instead of manager. Yes.
Also, in the other districts, do they answer to the superintendent or the designee? Or how come? What's that all about?
So, some of their operational organizational charts, some food service directors do report directly to the principal, and the principal's the one that oversees and they're their boss. My direct boss is the COO and then inevitably the superintendent. So, the superintendent's in charge of all of -- he actually signs the National School Lunch Program policy.
So, Dan Donovan is her direct supervisor?
Yeah. Thank you.
I have some more questions?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. So, how involved does the superintendent get in this? That we -- having him sign off on things now? Or was it done prior to?
It was done prior to. So, he is the end-all, be-all, the signature of. So, he has me approve it and then we go through his secretaries. And then that's what I know of, just being here.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. It says that the Food Service Director will request two food safety inspections annually for the district schools. Who do you request that from?
From our -- oh, sorry, I'm a little tired. So, from our sanitation department. So...
Is that from the city?
Yeah, from the city of Nashua. So, I'm trying to think it's like a...
Yeah, the inspector, the food inspector's from the city hall.
Food inspectors, yeah. We actually get four a year, but required by our license to have two. So...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's like agricultural. I forget the name of -- yeah, something different in Nashua.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If we don't have any more -- oh, yes, Ms. Brown.
I had a question about the line, "The district will seek to ensure that all students have access to school-provided meals. The superintendent or designee will develop a meal payment procedure for the school and provided meals." Is that new to this or is that -- was that in a previous document?
It was not a previous document, but we wanted it in there.
Okay. So, this means that we are going to make sure that every kid is fed, whether they can pay or not?
We're looking into that when we have to address the policy. So, we have to look into the meal charging policy. It was updated or approved in 2018, but that's our next step. So, we wanted to get this first and then go on to making sure everyone gets fed. Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Oden?
Thank you. Do we still have the policy that if a child has a high balance or doesn't have the money that they get a sunflower sandwich? Is that the policy?
Yes. So, the policy that was in -- I'm forgetting the date, but it still applies to the newest one that they have in there. It was from 2012 that it was still put in there because universally, that was what they had in all the meal charging policies across the United States because it was to help indicate, you know, kind of give notice to the parents. So, if the kid gets it, they, you know, says, "Oh, I got a sun butter and jelly sandwich" to their parents, and it kind of gives the parents the red flag to pay bill. Right now, we're like looking into that because of everything with the media and whatnot because everyone feels like they're being shamed by getting the sun butter and jelly sandwich. We're trying to think of a way to better notify the parents by that, you know, instead of that, of saying, "Here's a sun butter and jelly sandwich," instead of having a hot meal. So, it's outdated, is what I wanted to say, in a nutshell.
Thank you. I have one more question. Do we have anything in our policy? I had a teacher tell me that a student went through the line -- this didn't happen this year, but it has happened.
Okay.
Went through the line and got a hot lunch. And the person working the counter noticed the student had a balance and wouldn't be able to pay for it, wasn't paid for. And somebody went over, took the lunch out of the student's hand, and put it in the trash. Is there anything in our policy that lets people know that that is completely unacceptable?
There's nothing in the policy that says that it's completely unacceptable, but since I've started, we have not done that. So, we've all agreed, even making an exception, and I know this is on the record, but even in the high schools where we do still make the exception to give people food. It's no more, no money, no food. So, especially with working with the Meals Matters group, we really try to make sure that we feed everybody. Same thing in the elementary schools. We try not to substitute their meals with a sun butter and jelly sandwich. We try to give them a hot meal. So...
And if students take a milk and they don't want it or something, can they give it to one of their friends? Because that was frowned upon.
Still, it's in the law, like it's in the USDA guidelines, that we cannot do that. But again, working with Meals Matters and coming up with those shared carts, that's a way to initiate that it's okay to do that. So...
And do we have those shared carts in the elementary schools?
Not currently. We are still working with, you know, the lunch monitors and their staff. The principals do are being very proactive at finding volunteers to get them in there.
Okay. Thank you. I hope they get them in there because...
I do, too.
Having worked in a Title I elementary school, I see a real need for that. And what I find is kids are very willing to share, and when that's stifled, I think we're doing more harm.
Yeah.
A lot of harm.
Yeah. Our hands are very tied when it comes to the USDA guidelines, you know.
Thank you.
We're trying. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I had a question kind of related to that one. The requirements, are all kids required to take a milk and a juice or milk or a juice? Is it still required that they actually take it if they are -- don't have any allergies? Do they have to take one even if they're not going to drink it? Can they just not pick it up?
They're required. So, with all the meal components, there's five components for lunch. Like, so for breakfast, you have to have a fruit yogurt and a grain. And then for lunch, you have to have -- you can choose between a fruit or a veggie. And you have to have -- because this is leading up to it. So, then you have to have a milk, grain, protein, and then you get to choose the veggie or the fruit. We consider, like in the elementary schools, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have juice days. Those are considered the fruit. So, they have that option to not take it? If that answered the question? Yeah. So, yeah, okay. Yeah.
If we have no other questions, I motion to approve proposed EF policy regarding food service management.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All those opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Following on the tails of that one, we have three other policies that are now rolled into this. Do we want to speak to them individually or do you want me to just read off and say that we're motioning to rescind the next three policies because we just went over them? Okay. So, I can read. So, we're looking to rescind Policy 9130, Food Service Operations. Language is incorporated in Policy EF Number One and Paragraph Number One of Policy EF and Number Two in Paragraph Number One and Number Two. Do we have any questions about that? So, I motion to rescind Policy 9130, Food Service Operations.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And then similarly, I'm looking to rescind Policy 9215, Menus. We no longer have Type A lunch program. We offer versus service versus service and participation in the national lunch program. In addition, Number Two is incorporated in Policy EF Paragraph Seven. So, we've absorbed this policy. Any questions?
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Excellent. Motion passes. And then we go into Policy 9220. We're looking to rescind this as well. Financing the school lunch and milk programs. All relevant information is incorporated into the Policy EF. So, I motion to rescind 9220, Financing the School Lunch and Milk Programs.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. So, now we are looking at the next policy, which is a proposed Policy EFC in regards to free and reduced-priced lunch. We reviewed this policy with the Food Service Director to ensure correct language. Do we have any questions regarding this policy or comments? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I'd like to know what the percentage is of free and reduced lunch in the district between elementary, middle, and high school?
We are currently at -- I'd like to say at an average, if you were to average, up 40 percent. So, it's like 40.95.
That's for each level, the elementary, middle, and high school?
That's district.
That's district-wide? Okay. And the free and reduced lunch program, we took 9210 and kind of just consolidated into this like two paragraphs because we're using the food service, we're using websites to kind of define everything now? Is that it?
Well, with 92.10, we're currently not doing the milk program any longer, and we're not defining it as the Type A breakfast, lunch, and milk programs because we're now under the National School Lunch Program. So, that was the reasoning. And then also, since we have full-day kindergarten, was another reason why. It was outdated.
Also, to answer that further, the Paragraph Three from the one that you're discussing, the -- I don't have it. Hold on. 9210, the Number Three is incorporated into EFC into Paragraph Two. So, the third paragraph in this is incorporated into the new EFC.
Because we follow pretty much national standards in regards to free and reduced lunch, we don't have our own separate policies or requirements with our state and our city.
No, we do not.
Correct.
So, if we have no other comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Oden?
Thank you. This is a fairly long form to fill out for parents. Can they fill this out online?
Yes, actually. I feel like an advertisement. We have PayPal's online. So, it comes in all the different languages, too, as well.
That's what I was going to ask. Is it multi-language?
Yes. They have the option to change the language as well.
Okay.
And it's the best option for them to do.
For those who do not have a computer at home or some technology, can they go to the library? Is it something they could fill out? Okay.
Yeah, we actually discussed this on numerous meetings and the meeting last week as well. We were really heavily encouraging folks to get them to the library and stand there. We had student volunteers, too, last week. So, we're really, really would love for them to fill out.
Thank you. That's good. Thanks.
And you're meaning the school library is not the public library?
Yes, correct. The public library was mentioned in another meeting that I was in.
Right. But we had the student...
School libraries was mentioned last week.
The student volunteers were able to help out.
Yes, we're not taking them away from -- yes. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I've got a question. When we're doing different languages for them to fill out the form, when we get it back, is it then flipped over into English or is it still in that native language and do we have interpreters?
So, somehow, online, they help us out with that. It goes through our system. We use PCS as our POS system and also the system that we process our applications. It just translates to us and says that that person's approved with the information, just gives us the last name, the name of the student. When it's -- we only have printed Spanish and English. With the Spanish applications, we do have an interpreter that does hand it to us, and we have access to an interpreter in the district as well. So, if we needed a question. But it's fairly, very simple application that all we would need to get is the actual income and the names to input.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I motion that we accept -- we send -- sorry. I motion that we accept the proposed EFC policy and send to the board for full vote. I forgot to say.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Now, because we've done that one, I'm looking to rescind Policy 9210 because it's rolled into the current -- the policy that we just went over. So, just to recap, we no longer have Type A lunch programs. The subsidized milk program no longer exists because it was only for half-day kindergarten. In addition, Number Three is incorporated into EFC Paragraph Number Two, which we just reviewed. Any comments or questions? Okay. I motion to rescind Policy 9210 and send to the full board for vote.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. So, the next policy that we are proposing is Policy JFABD, Admission of Homeless Students. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to speak to the changes that were made in this policy?
This isn't a new policy. We just updated it to reflect the current mandates and appropriate terms, for example, ELL, because we don't offer bilingual education and services, and it's -- and to format it the same way as the other policies because it was formatted differently. Robert Chopa and our homeless liaison both had the opportunity to review this, and any of the changes that are in here are recommended by them.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Brown?
I had two questions. One, what's the -- why are we removing gifted and talented programs from the first paragraph?
Because in Nashua, we don't actually have gifted and talented programs. We do have accelerated students, but it's not a codified program.
Do you think that just for the sake of possible addition of those programs in the future that we should leave it in there? Or expansion of those programs? No?
I would think if we were going to be adding that back in, we could come back to this policy and amend it. But I don't think we've had the gifted and talented programs for...
Let's see.
I'm not really aware. We have a veteran administrator that may remember. How long has it been since we had a gifted and talented?
A week?
Before that, it was sale.
That's what we were just talking about, when -- how long ago that was.
At least 10.
Yeah.
Well...
We do accelerate -- I understand what you're saying, but we do accelerate students. But I'm not sure that we should pass a policy that has language in it that's not current.
Okay.
But we could always, if we reinstate a gifted and talented program, then we would have the opportunity to change the policy again.
So, I have a question regarding the cross-staff awaiting foster care placement. When kids are placed or when kids are placed in foster care, I know sometimes they have the option of staying in their school district or going to the -- then being a sending district to wherever the school is, depending on what the kiddos need. When they stay in district, are they considered homeless students or are they staying within their -- they're living in a different place? It's not the district that the school's in, but they're being sent back to the school?
Right. And because they're in foster placement, they're not considered homeless, but they have the rights to...
Remain in that school.
Remain in that school, yeah.
Okay. And does that include transportation for them or do the...
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
Thank you. In the third paragraph from the bottom, it says, "If the unaccompanied youth or parent or guardian wishes to appeal the superintendent's decision, that individual shall inform the homeless liaison, and the appeal shall be heard by the Board of Education at its next regularly scheduled monthly meeting, should the words be in non-public session if desired." I don't think most people would feel comfortable if it was public. So, I think if we put that in there, it would give people the feeling that they had confidence that it wasn't going to be in public.
I'm sorry, which paragraph?
Third from the bottom. "If the unaccompanied youth or parent..." And at the end of it, it says, "at its next regularly scheduled monthly meeting." And what I'm asking is, should we say that "in non-public session if desired"? I just think it clarifies it for the people that are -- that want to challenge this.
I'm just wondering if that would fall under kind of the keeping students' names confidential, that it would automatically be a non-public session? No?
Often, often, it's up to them, their choice, whether they... And I just think it's nice to let them know that it's their choice.
Okay. I don't mind adding that in, make sure people have the option. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Because when I was on the board 20 years ago, we had a dispute that came in, and the parents chose to do it in public. So, they should have that -- it should be in there, definitely, that they have that choice to be public or non-public.
Can I just double-check? Mrs. Oden, you said "in non-public session if desired," correct? Okay. I just want to make sure I had the language right.
If somebody has better language, I don't have a problem, but I just wanted people to know that that -- it doesn't have to -- when you say "at its next regularly scheduled board monthly meeting," it kind of, kind of leaves it open, and I just would assume that people would want to know. You could say, "Parents or guardians can choose whether they would like to be heard in a public or non-public meeting setting," if you want to do it that way, to kind of give it...
I think it's pretty clear, "in non-public session if desired," that, you know, rather than add a lot more verbiage to it, because, I mean, we're all in consensus that we should add this, and there's nobody objecting to it. I think we should try to make the wording as simple as possible. So, if someone is reading this, they -- it says that "the appeal shall be heard by the Board of Education in non-public session if desired by the parent or guardian." That way, there, it's -- you don't have to add a whole new sentence. Yeah.
Do we ever run into instances where students are living with family members who don't necessarily have guardianship but have permission from the parents for the kids to be living there?
We have situations where students are living with other family members, but it's not necessarily a legal arrangement. And if they're under 18, it would have to be somebody that has legal rights for that student to speak to the homeless question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So, I motion to send proposed Policy JFABD, Admission of Homeless Students, to the board for full vote.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
You said "as amended," right?
Yeah. Oh, she didn't, but I have the amendment.
Okay, it has to be amended.
As amended?
Yeah.
I wrote it down right there. Do you want me to re-say it?
Probably for the record.
Okay. So, I motion -- I motion to send proposed bill, proposed policy, JFABD, Admission of Homeless Students, to full board as amended.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. So, then, the next policy that we're reviewing is Policy 11111, Public Conduct on School Property. And we are looking to...
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt.
Sorry.
But we also have the proposed JFABDR, which is actually the form for disputing. So, we attach our forms that go with policies in the policy manual.
Okay.
And so, this is just the form that the person with the dispute would fill out.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
We have a form for each school because this is the address for this high school?
No, this is where the district liaison's office is.
Okay.
And that's why it's directed there.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And do we have this in multiple languages?
Not yet because it hasn't been approved.
Okay.
But when it is, we'll be able to get it. At least in Spanish and most likely Portuguese. But I would probably speak with Ian Harvey about getting it on the website where you can choose your language.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay. So, I am motioning to send proposed JFBDR, Admission of Homeless Students Dispute Resolution Form, to full board for vote.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. So, again, back to Policy 11111, Public Conduct on School Property. So again, back to policy 11111, Public Conduct on School Property. This is a policy that is not in the city charter. There's, when they went back to the 1970s, could not find the city ordinance. It was never adopted by the Order of Education. The concern is, who, who would issue the fine? In these situations, the schools call the police or SRO. Do we have any comments or questions about this?
Can I just get another moment to read this? Okay, thanks. Before we vote.
Yes, Mr. Greeno?
So, so this was never approved?
No.
So it's actually not a policy, no, existing?
Can I just respond that this happened last week too? And I don't feel like I have the authority to take something out of the policy manual, even if it was never actually adopted by the BLE. I feel like bringing it forward is probably the best course of action.
There has to be a better way of, of asking to get these out of some fictional policy book.
We're making great progress, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Brown?
So is this any, it says any person, so is that like students as well? Those rules would apply to them? Or no person shall do any of these things? So are these applicable during the school day? Or is this just for after-school events?
I believe it's for any time during the day on school property. And it says a person, except a person enrolled as a student, or the parents or guardians of that person. So we have other policies that cover these situations where students or parents need to be escorted from the property. And generally speaking, if we have somebody that becomes completely unruly, we call the SRO, the police, because that's really the best course of action. And it's a $10 fine. Who's going to issue it and who's going to collect it?
Yes, Mr. Greeno?
There's actually a typo in here. Says, "No person, no person on school property number two shall injure or threaten to insure the person of another."
Rescind. I think it's a good thing we're removing this. If we don't have, yes, Ms. Johnson?
I don't mind eliminating this, provided we have something that's of equal value that's in its place. And we didn't get that with the packet to show what we have.
Because what we have is we have SROs in the building, particularly in the high schools, but also the police available. So that if somebody gets unruly to the point where we'd consider issuing them a fine, the police would become involved. And so it's more of a legal matter than it is issuing fines that we could never collect.
Yes, Mr. Greeno?
I think also, we have a policy that says, "The principal of the school is in charge of the property and basically can, can maintain, must maintain order and, and can call the police or have someone removed."
Ms. Johnson?
$10 to me, this is antiquated $10. You know, that was back in the days, in '75, because ordinance '75, that's the year. But what my concern is, is that being ruly and violate the rules, I, I'm not going to vote to remove this right now, although there is no ordinance. We don't need to have an ordinance to say, "What are the rules and conduct for, to be in the school?" Because really, when you enter this building, you go on this property, you're a guest, you're a visitor, and you're expected to be, act in a certain manner. But I really want to, references to what we have in the policy, and I'm going to ask that we hold this at the committee level, so we can see what the, you know, the policy on the public conduct in the school comparable to, and then, then remove this, if the other members agree with me.
And we do have policies about visitors to schools and expectations around their conduct, but I didn't include it in the packet.
I think also, when we're, when we're asking for other agencies to, to place fines on people that we can't then follow up on, we're asking other people to follow their own codes and laws. So for us to even say that we were going to fine somebody $10 and then not be able to follow through on it, it's kind of an empty, an empty policy, anyway. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Okay, $10 to me is, is a moot thing, really. I just want to make sure that what we have in this policy that we're going to eliminate, because the Board of Alderman never voted this in as an ordinance, I just want to see what's comparable to this. Because I want to make sure who's unruly on this property, that we have the same rules and regulations without the money. Because the fines really come from the court, if they get removed. And they have to go to court, and the police arrest them. That's the courts business. My business is that they don't come in here, and they don't break up the place, and we don't have the fights, and we don't have any people loitering because of the situations now in this climate out there. So I just want to make sure that we have equal, equal on this compared to what this ordinance never did, because they never voted on it. That's all I'm asking for. So I'm going to ask if we can hold this in committee.
Yes, Mr. Greeno?
So I'm a little confused here. It, it says, "City Ordinance 075-235." It, it says that the ordinance exists. It doesn't say that it wasn't voted on by the City of Nashua. I think what, what was not voted on was this policy itself was never approved by the Board of Education. So I think we're talking about two different things. Right? So, so it doesn't mean that the city ordinance doesn't exist. I don't know if it does exist or doesn't exist. It's never been brought up, updated, or it's still there.
Am I understanding is that the administrative assistants called down to the city, and the person who they spoke to literally went to the vault to see if they could find the city ordinance, and they couldn't find any record of it?
Oh, there's no record of it? Okay.
Now, did it exist at one time, possibly? Are filing errors made occasionally? But the point is, is that we were calling to find out if this ordinance actually was in effect. And the person at City Hall could not find the ordinance.
Yeah, so I have no problem rescinding a policy that speaks to an ordinance that really doesn't exist. I mean, I, I think we should rescind it. And, and I think that maybe this policy committee could come up with a different, an updated version of conduct on school policy, on school property, or maybe show us what we have in existence.
And I'd be happy to bring that to the next meeting, because we do have language and policies about behavior on school grounds by the public. So I'm more than happy to bring that to the next meeting for folks.
I, I remember reading something, we do have something that's in our policy about people on school property. I can't remember what it is.
There's a lot of policies.
Yeah, we have a lot of policies. But I do remember reading one about public conduct on school policy, definitely, and about bringing weapons to, to school property. So we do have it. So I, I have no problem. I, I think this is antiquated and needs to go away.
Ms. Brown?
It would be my suggestion to do what Ms. Johnson said, and maybe table it till the next meeting, so you have the other policy to put in place. Because I think you're going to end up having this entire discussion again during the full Board meeting, if you bring that up without that information. So I think as a time saver, it might be better if you handle this here next month. Because I think, I agree, it should be rescinded if it's got a redundant policy, but if you don't want to have to talk about it again right now.
Will you be able to grab that policy?
Yes, I can have that available in the packet for the next meeting, attached to this.
Perfect. Okay. So I motion to review this again next meeting.
I make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Yes.
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes to table. Okay, so now the big one. You ready? So the next policy discuss, to discuss is Proposed Policy JICA in regards to the Student Dress Code policy. We had a lot of, a lot of comments about this. A lot of the emails that I received, I think we all received them, were in regards to the support of kind of removing the gender from the, from the dress code. Continued concerns about the length of the pants, how we would measure that, or the inseam. And then the pajamas were kind of a hot button issue. And in regards to hats, I think each school had a different view on what, what battles they wanted to pick. And hats, in some schools, just weren't a big enough issue. I bet people have things they want to say. And we have two high school principals here who want to speak to this as well. Yes, Ms. Oden?
Could we hear from the high school principals first? Because they're the ones that have to enforce this and work with it. So I, I quite frankly, think this is a policy that should not be top-down, but bottom-up, because they're the ones that work with it. So I would like to hear from them. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. As you got some correspondence, we did as well from some of our staff. I think it was similar concerns, the inseam, three to four inch, I think is what it says in the policy. Currently, South, we don't allow hats or hoods, and North has allowed hats and things like that. And I think what works in our buildings, we try and manage and do. And, you know, I think with high school-aged students, you're always correcting certain behaviors. And, you know, we have certain, I'll speak to the hats, certain number of kids who wear hats, and we address them each day. And they are often very respectful and polite, and take them off. And sometimes I have it sitting on my desk till 2:03, and they pick it up the other day, you know? When students from North come over, they are respectful, they know our rules, they take their hat off when they enter the building, or a gentle reminder. And there's never any big power struggles or anything like that typically. I think the more concern that we probably had was the three to four inch down. Talking about April 4th, is we're going to get into a situation where we're measuring clothing on our students, things like that. We've kind of, have done a quick little fingertip rule that we've kind of adopted that's just kind of quick, easy, just, you know, the student measures themselves. And typically, we want our kids coming to school, not wanting them to turn them around at the front door if they're, you know, half inch short here or there, you know, they're there. And usually, it's a conversation. And another thing I think that we probably address a lot too is showing of the belly area, and just ask kids, it's funny, "Hey, do you have a jacket or sweatshirt?" And often, it comes right out of their backpack, because they probably knew before they left that morning that I might get caught, and I had my backup plan. And again, we just deal with it. And sometimes the young gentlemen have this look where their pants sag a little bit sometimes. I don't get that look at all, but often, we ask them to just kind of pull them up. And again, it's more conversation piece, I guess, because we don't want to be sending kids home, or, you know, things like that. So I'll let Nate speak about North, but that's kind of the conversation we've been having at South.
I think, you know, we have pretty much the same, same things at North that Keith deals with at South. It's more of a conversation piece. We, you know, our goal is to keep kids in class and, and keep them here and get them here. So, you know, we're not ever trying to really send a kid home for having shorts that are too short, or, you know, if we have to go down, we have Katie's closet, so we're able to use that on occasion. And South has a pantry as well. So we always try to support kids. And like Keith said too, usually if you catch somebody that has a shirt that's inappropriate, they've got a change of clothes right in their bag, because they knew they were going to get caught with it, you know, as soon as they walked in the door. Hats for us haven't really been an issue. We, I think it was about 10 years ago, probably, that the Student Senate passed a bill with one of our former principals here. And, you know, they gave their reasonings for it. A lot of it too has to do with, you know, social-emotional pieces. Some students just feel comfort in having their head covered. It's one of those things that, you know, we haven't decided, we've decided not to really address and allow the students to do that. But again, like, like Keith said, when our students go to South, they know that the rule is, when you walk in that door, that you're following South rules. And, you know, you need to make sure you take your hat off and remove it. And he has students that come from South, and they wear their hats when they're in our building. So I think it kind of goes both ways. And, you know, to me, my goal is just get the kids to school, keep them in school. And I'd hate to see something where, you know, you're calling a kid out on a skirt or shorts that are, are too short, and then it escalates into something that's bigger and you end up having to send them home, or suspend them, or give them additional consequences. So our dress code, to me, is, you know, lower on the, on the totem pole in terms of discipline and some of the issues that we're dealing with on a daily basis.
Thank you. And also, do you mind just stating your names for the recording?
Yep, sorry. Keith Richard, Nashville High School, South.
And Nate Burns, Nashville High School, North.
Thank you. I'm sure we have questions, Ms. Johnson?
Do you dress a lot pajamas, bedroom shoes, or slippers? A lot?
I'll be honest, when we do Spirit Week, we sometimes have a pajama day, so...
One thing.
Yeah, so I might have to rethink that one, maybe, but...
We actually had pajama day on Monday this week.
Uh-oh.
Before Spirit Week. But rarely, I'd say rarely are students wearing pajamas. And I don't think I've ever really seen slippers on a student.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, maybe pajama, they look like flannel bottoms, kind of long. Yeah, nothing that I would think was inappropriate for pajamas.
Yes, Ms. Oden?
What surprised me, I heard from people about the pants sagging down. And that seemed to be as much of a problem as anything from, I think, probably four or five people approached me about that. How, how, how do you deal with that? Is that an easily remedied problem?
I think we just ask them to pull their pants up, you know, and hopefully, that's the best. And next, you know, if they turn the corner and they're down again, we'll address it another time, you know, anytime that we see it. Sometimes they wear athletic shorts underneath their jeans. Just to even, again, I don't, I don't understand the look, I don't, but my belt's always pulled pretty tight. My pants coming down. But, yeah, I mean, they'll even wear like sweatpants underneath, just so their, you know, undergarments aren't showing and things like that. But as Mr. Burns said, we just ask them to pull it up and address it as it comes.
I, I didn't realize that was a problem. I, I knew it was long ago. I thought that was passe now, but...
We have a few kids. They're holding on.
And, and I know Mr. Richard talked about finger length. So he said, "Do you have that same type of thing?"
Yeah, we do the same.
You do the same thing? So that's what's...
Much easier, I think they had adopted it before we did. We had, I think it was six inches or something that we had done. But just so much easier to just have a student stand there with their arms at their sides, and you can tell it's appropriate or not at that point.
I think years ago, it was like two inches above the knee or something, and you literally saw people pulling a ruler out against, you know, knee. And I just, I always found that kind of embarrassing for a student. You get into arguments about where the top of your knee starts, and you know what I mean? Or just they'd pull them down, like seriously, and it's like, now we're dealing with this, you know? And where you could just have a conversation, "Hey, a little short, how about you don't wear those the next time?"
Thank you.
I think it's just all about modesty, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
How often do things, how often does dress code affect a student's day where they are asked to leave school or their parents are involved?
It's very rarely that, that ever happens.
Yeah. Sending somebody home or keeping them up, it would have to be pretty inappropriate to not have them in class, or usually, you make a phone call home and a parent will come. Or, again, I'll be honest, most kids will have something in their backpack, or in their locker, they'll throw sweatpants on, or something like that. Usually, it's remedied pretty quickly.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I know we had a lot of emails regarding this, kind of both sides. I think more to the dress code, I left my phone in the car, which is a rarity. And I know that we just got another email today, which I was unable, didn't have the chance to read. I think there should be a dress code. I don't have a problem with, you know, the finger length. I don't think pajamas or bedroom shoes or slippers should be worn, because I think the bedroom shoes or slippers could be a hazard going down the stairs. They could slip and fall, and then we have more problems. Pajamas, other than pajama day, I don't think it's appropriate to be in school. People said, you know, what, with learning. But, you know, whether, you want to take a look, we're getting them ready to leave this. I don't care what the colleges do, that's not our realm. If colleges want to be that liberal and let them wear pajamas, that's college. But here at the high school, we're getting them ready to go to college, to go into the workforce, or go into technical training. And that, in my opinion, I'm old-fashioned, I guess. When I was young, it wasn't bad, you know, to go against the rules. But, I mean, appropriate dress needs to be, you know? So I don't have a problem making the dress code a little thicker. And I remember, again, when I was on the Board, we started with the hats, the negotiation of the hats versus, if you want me to wear badge, then I want to wear a hat. And they didn't want to have the badges, to wear student badges to show that they could be in school. So that was a negotiating tool. My attitude was, you know, if you work for BAE or Raytheon, they tell you... My attitude was, you know, if you work for BAE or Raytheon, they tell you you wear a badge, like it or not, you know, no negotiating. But if hats, at this point in time, is not a big deal, I'm not going to make a big deal about that. I'd rather have the other clothing appropriate than worrying about a hat. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so it's headgear, including hats, hoodies, bandanas, and caps, are not allowed, unless permitted for religious, medical, or other reason by school administration. Do we, do you have feelings on, I know hoodies, they probably just pop over their head anyway, but bandanas and caps, do you have concerns about that?
I think we don't necessarily allow, we don't allow bandanas, but other than that.
We don't allow headwear, so.
And is there, do we know when there's a difference between when it's more of a social fad, or if it's something to do to protect hair, or as some sort of a cultural?
We have conversations with students. We've had certain, we have certainly had students with medical issues, concerns, where, you know, speaking with the student, this parent, they feel much more comfortable wearing something covering their head. Maybe they had a surgery, maybe there's a large scar, maybe alopecia, something like that. Where we sent an email, "Hey, Mr. Burns is fine wearing a hat, please just don't ask, it's, you know, he's got the AOK from administration." No questions asked. We've had students who, with concussion protocol, were wearing a hat, helps with the lights, no problem. So we make those exceptions, we communicate with the teachers. Again, we have a large building, but typically, we just tell our student, "If somebody asks you to, you know, please take off your hat, just be an adult, explain to them the situation, you have the approval, and go from there."
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Maybe we could add some kind of language that says, "Headwear at the discretion of the principal." Because I'd even be okay with that being at the elementary school level as well. I mean, there's some, some places even those kids, I mean, well, I'm not saying they should share their hats, but I'm saying if the principal at the school or administration wants to make that call, I think that would be completely acceptable.
So my question would be, if it's going to be up, so if one high school is doing it and one high school isn't, does that now mean that both high schools are going to be permitted to wear hats? And are you guys okay with that, if we scratch this out of the dress code?
I don't think, sorry.
I guess, I don't know, maybe I'm just speaking for, I don't know, maybe I'm speaking for Keith or for other principals, because I know, you know, he and I represent the high schools, but obviously, you know, middle school principals also are dealing with this, elementary to some extent as well. I'm just wondering if maybe it's best, or in the best interest to have students, faculty members, maybe, and some administration have some input into this policy before making a lot of these decisions, to let other stakeholders have that opportunity.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Okay. And I'm glad you said that, because that was my next thinking, because what's acceptable at the high school isn't always acceptable at the elementary or the middle schools. And where it says headgear, including hats, hoodies, it can be put in there. Special exception will be made for religious reasons, medical reasons, provided that we have documentation. So that can always be cleared up with it, because if somebody's sick, they're going to have probably special exceptions anyway, and they're going to have a medical letter. And if it's for religious reasons, we're going to want to know it's for religious reasons. Nobody else has to know, it's just the administrators that have to be aware of this.
Well, I think if that's written in there, and if the kids read this policy, they would know that their neighbor, Sally Jo, was wearing a hat, either because of religion or medical reasons. I think that probably puts their business out there a bit too much.
No, it's not. There's a HIPAA law, and there's a FERPA law that can't, it would go just to the administration, and that's as far as it would go. This way, it's coming with the doctor's letter, and it's saying that for, let's say, the next six months, because maybe they're going through chemo, that they have to have their head covered. And it just covers, and all the teachers are aware of this, no questions asked, and it's just, that's that special exception. If we're going to be saying, "No hats, no this," and we're going to keep it, and we're going to make a uniform for all the schools. There's always a special exception for somebody with a disability, or there could be a religious reason, and we're making it clear. Those are certain exceptions. Without those exceptions, then we're not going to allow it.
Yes, Mr. Greenow?
I think the way we have this written here, it would actually be okay for, by, because we have one high school that allows hats and one that doesn't, but it does say, "Or other reason by school administration." So it just says, "Other reason." And then it also gives administration at each school the right, reserves the right to determine what constitutes appropriate dress. So basically, you could have one principal in one high school say, "Hats are okay," and one is not okay, based on what we have here. It really doesn't affect, I mean, that's the way I read it, and I'm a bureaucrat, so I know how to read around these things.
Yes. I just wanted to support what they said about asking other administrators, because I would have to speak specifically to my three middle school principals, but as a former middle school principal, we didn't allow hats, because middle school boys can't leave each other's hats alone.
Right.
And so it caused other kinds of disruption in the hallway and in the school buildings, so as a middle school principal, we didn't allow them. But I really would have to ask my three principals, I don't see hats, but that doesn't mean that they're not allowed.
Ms. Oden?
I agree with Nate. I think it's important to get the input from students, staff, administrators. And I think each school should be able to follow some basic policies, but I think each should have their own personality. I look at the elementary schools, and I think they have different policies. I know when I was at, when I was teaching, the school I was at had a policy trying to get kids not to wear flip-flops, because often, the flip-flop at the elementary school would come out, and the child is out on the playground, they have recess. So their policies are a little different, fitted to the kids. So I think, I think getting the input from our people in the schools is really important. And I have no problem with each school having their own personality. I think that's important. Thank you.
I think we were also saying that we were going to hold off on really pushing this anywhere until we have the school board administration, because we hadn't officially joined that at the last committee meeting. So we were waiting to see what their guidelines, and to get some guidance from them about how to incorporate everybody's ideals in this. Ms. Brown?
Sorry, I just wanted, this is not, I was going to say, this is not, I agree with that. I just wanted to put one more thing out there. On the very small, further down, if we're about to table it, I want to get one more thing in. Down at the bottom, it says apparel, jewelry, accessories, tattoos, or members of grooming, that. I thought, could we add the word exposed tattoos in front of that? Is that? No?
I think, I think that's important.
But I realize that, I agree with you, that we should wait until we get the state board certification, get more input from principals. But I think that addition, if we go with this document, would be good.
I also think that if a student is 18 and has a tattoo, then legally, they have a right to-
Well, no, and I was saying that it's by nature of its arrangement, denotes membership in a gang. That's why I said, if you've got, I have no problem with you having a tattoo, it's, if it's that kind of thing, it should be covered.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know, a teacher has a tattoo from previous life experience, or whatever.
Okay. Sorry. So I motion to table this until we're able to review the school board administration policies, and if they can help us work through some of these, maybe they can, do they normally come? Or do we send this off to them and they review it?
We would send it off to them and review it, but also, I'd like to follow the suggestion of the administration and Mrs. Oden, and reach out to my administrators. And I would say Student Voice may be a good place to take this, at least for high school, and come back with recommendations based on what they had to say.
So I motion to table this? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, we will review this at the next committee meeting. I motioned, thank you very much for your input, guys. So I motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. So I adjourn this policy meeting at 7:36.